You can start whenever you're ready, Leah, we're recording.
Okay, I'm just observing their participant count going up, but I give everyone a moment. Good evening and welcome. Thank you for joining us for tonight's public hearing on a request to open a new public charter school in Washington DC. I am Leah Cruzey Board Chair. Joining me this evening are my fellow board members, Vice Chair Jan Sandman, Secretary Ricardo Ganjam, Treasurer Chantel Wright, Shakora Ademofanian, and Nick Rodriguez. Tonight, we have one agenda item. That's to hear from the founding group that has applied to open a new public charter school in DC. We will meet again for a monthly board meeting on Monday, April 24th at 6:00 PM to discuss and vote on other charter school matters. A critical component of our mission is to provide quality public school options. One way we do this is by opening innovative schools that feel an unmet need that does not exist in the district. Annually, we welcome new proposals to open a charter school from applicant groups with diverse background and expertise. During this process, each applicant group is evaluated through a meticulous evaluation that includes capacity interviews with the founding groups. Tonight, my colleagues and I will listen and ask questions. At the May 15th Board Meeting, this board will decide whether to approve or deny the charter application. This decision will be followed by a formal decision letter sent to the applicant group informing them of the board's vote in the days following that meeting. The letter will also be posted on our website, dcpcsb.org. And now I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Walker Davis, our Executive Director.
Thank you, Chair Cruzey. Our strategic roadmap guides our oversight work. One of the strategic priorities identified in the plan is to conduct annual needs assessments to identify gaps, to inform new school and expansion planning, and shift the charter application process to align with citywide need. With this priority in mind, the DC PCSB staff and board took time, the latter part of 2021 and all of 2022, to re-envision the charter application and grade expansion rubric and evaluation process. The need to adjust our existing process came when schools were trying to navigate the uncertainty caused by the COVID-19 pandemic and the significant changes planned for DC PCSB's accountability framework, another strategic priority. We sought to improve the quality of applications reviewed and approved by the DC PCSB board to ensure we are offering strong in-demand options to DC families. As a result of the work conducted, the team made the following critical steps to produce the 2023 Charter Application Guidelines. They made DC PCSB's decision-making process for evaluating arguments of school demand equitable, transparent, and accessible to applicants and community stakeholders. The evaluation rubric in applicant decisions describes how DC PCSB staff will make recommendations to the board. We also reviewed the charter application guidelines with an equity lens so that the guidelines ensure applicants are prepared to serve all students in the current educational landscape. Using this lens, DC PCSB staff made the most content-heavy revisions to sections of the guidelines about special populations, demand, community input, and finance. We also engaged with community stakeholders, especially families, to understand how they make decisions about school choices. DC PCSB partnered with Lumen Impact Group to conduct a survey and focus group outreach with this goal in mind. And lastly, we ensured that applicants, community stakeholders, and DC PCSB staff understood the charter application process and revisions to make decisions more equitable, transparent, and accessible. It was during the September 2022 Board Meeting, the team presented these new charter application guidelines to this body and the public, officially releasing the guidelines on our website a month prior. I am truly looking forward to tonight's discussion, and I welcome hearing the perspectives and reflections of our board members as they entertain the applicant that is before us. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Walker Davis. As we move through the hearing tonight, our moderator for the evening, Ayesha, will promote and unmute the registered speakers. The hand-raising feature has been disabled. Individuals who've previously signed up to testify will be called upon. And as a reminder, all written public comment is available to the public on our website. If you didn't sign up by sending your name to the public comment mailbox before this meeting, please do submit your comments to public commenting at dcpcsb.org or call our public comment line to leave a voicemail testimony at 202-328-2660 and select option two. Let's now hear from the six witnesses who signed up to speak this evening. I'd like to begin by inviting Suzanne Wells to testify.
Thank you. My name is Suzanne Wells. I'm Award VI resident, and I am testifying about the ISM Creative Academy application. There is no doubt the applicant is well-intentioned and Montessori programs are popular. However, DC currently has more schools than are needed for the number of students the city has and accounting for a declining birth rate. On April 7th, 2023, Deputy Mayor of Education Paul Kine testified before the DC Council. He said, "We have enough schools in the city. Everybody has got to be extremely careful about the idea of any new schools." Why is there a concern about having too many schools? The overabundance of schools results in spreading our education dollars thinly across 249 schools. When a new school opens, it inevitably pulls students from existing DCPS and charter schools. We have reached a point where some of our neighborhood by-right schools in Ward VII and VIII have so few students that it is difficult for them to be viable. Empty seats are most often found at the schools with the most at-risk students, and they are the ones hurt the most when the city spreads its education dollars thinly and when new schools open. How are schools to improve if they keep losing students and funding? Neighborhood by-right schools are important community institutions, and they should be well-resourced and supported. Finally, it should be noted that the applicant doesn't mention DC Wildflower, a pre-K 3 to kindergarten Montessori program the Public Charter School Board approved in April 2021. The decision letter said the enrollment ceiling for school year 2324 was to be 95. School year 24 budget documents project an enrollment of 26 students for DC Wildflower. There is no public information that explains why the enrollment is almost 70 students less, but this should be considered when reviewing the ISM Creative Academy application. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wells. I'll next welcome Ms. Valerie Jablow. Please keep your comments to two minutes, Ms. Jablow. Thank you.
I am Valerie Jablow, a DC resident since 1991, commenting on the application of Creative Academy to start a Montessori program. The applicant's analysis of demand makes no detailed mention of the word-specific locations of existing Montessori programs, including Logan, Ward VI, and Langdon, Ward V, both wards the applicant has mentioned wanting to locate in. The applicant also makes no mention of a newly-approved Montessori DC Wildflower. This lack of basic but central information highlights your evasion of responsibility for outlining DC's school landscape. If the applicant is wrong or otherwise misguided in its analysis of demand, who is to prove otherwise? Instead, demand here is centered, per your application, on the applicant's interests. If it were centered on actual demographic or fiscal conditions, the following facts would be disqualifying. There is declining enrollment over the long term in all grades in DC's publicly-funded schools, while kindergarten enrollment is dropping, in part because births have declined, and none of that will change despite a slight uptick in enrollment this year, while waitlist data cited in the application does not represent unique applicants but likely the same students on multiple waitlists. Such omissions and distortions do not accrue to taxpayers' benefit as the proliferation of unfilled seats in existing publicly-funded schools has grown to dire proportions in just five years. For instance, in fall 2017, DC had about 21,000 unfilled seats in its publicly-funded schools. In 2022, it had 35,000. Yet that waste of public resources is for you fiscally advantageous as the Charter Board gets fees from all charter LEAs, so the more LEAs and seats, the more students and fees. If you believe there is justice in such misuse of public money, then please tell that to the families of existing schools that are currently enduring loss of enrollment and budget cuts as a result, all of whom had no choice in any of it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll next welcome Kendall Mitchell. Welcome, Ms. Mitchell. I think you're unmuted.
Sorry, can you hear me?
I can hear you now, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Hi, so I'm new to this process. And wow, this has really been a kind of interesting and stressful. So listen, I'm just a grandma who's looking for a really nice school for my three grands to go to. I understand that this school, that they're looking to open this school hopefully in Ward VII, where I live and where my daughter lives and where my grandchildren live. So specifically, I'm here to testify or give comment on the application for ISM. I'm a grandma with three baby grands under four in the next year, so they'll be attending some type of educational program, and I've been working real hard with my daughter. She's supposed to be here, but she can't be here tonight. I'm researching, looking for a school for her two-year-old. And I'm hearing these other schools are available, and they didn't do their homework or blah, 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 but where I live, there's no program like this, not close to us across the bridge. I love the Montessori teaching style. All three of my children went to Montessori schools when they started school, and I just think this would be a great thing for our community. And I think it's I've been reading and researching and talking to them about this school. And just having a smaller classroom size with multiple teachers is solely lacking, solely lacking in our area. So I only have two minutes, and I just think it's a great idea that these young people are putting forward and trying to innovate and bring here. I'm hearing all this other commentary about taking away from other students and taking away from other parents or whatever, but some of us don't have anything to take away from, and we would really like to share in the resources of what everyone else is having. So that's my commentary. Thank you so much. This has really been very wow. So thanks. It, woo boy, guys need to take the heat down just a little bit. So thank you. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. My next welcome, Adoria Doucet.
Thank you for inviting me to speak today. Like the last person that spoke, I am in awe of how the last person before her literally choked to get out all of the reasons why this shouldn't happen. I'm here today to tell you that I am a Ward VI resident, and there is a dividing line that is systematic and simultaneous across the nation, and a lot of it plays into gentrification. So the needs that are required for minorities in this city in the seat of power, Washington DC as the nation's capital, are just not met. I think there's no better candidate than Scott Mallory. I've known Scott since he was a young teenager, and I'm super proud to call him my adopted nephew. I know that TED Talk invited him, where most people have to pay to be involved in that, to participate. He is highly creative, he's very ambitious, and he's more than capable to bring something extremely unique to the nation's capital. That is my feeling, and I would hope, as the last person said, that the tone be taken down a little bit. It's really about kids and creating opportunity and education that would be emulated across the nation for what Scott can bring to the table. Are you?
Thank you, Ms. Doucet. Looks like we have Jasmine McClinton on.
Hello, good evening. My name is Jasmine McClinton, and I'm a current DC resident and native Washingtonian educator, and most proudly, I'm a first-time mom. As such, the health of my son is my top priority. And within that is a growing concern for me to access quality and trustworthy developmental and educational spaces for him. Therefore, I'm here to express my support for the ISM Creative Academy. I am thoroughly impressed with the academy's plans to employ the Montessori approach with an emphasis on creativity and innovative methods. In 2023, I would contend that all advocates for healthy children would agree that our educational systems could benefit from innovation. Having heard about this initiative through community outreach, I am confident that ISM will provide an option that will prioritize the health and growth of the whole child, equally valuing social-emotional exploration, self-guided discovery, and partnerships with parents, involving them as equal stakeholders. I'm ecstatic to have been exposed to this new opportunity, and I intend to enroll my son in their program. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McClinton. And Ayesha, is Brenda Sabir in the waiting room? No, okay. Okay. This concludes the public testimony portion of our public hearing. I would next like to welcome Bijan Lane, the Sector Planning and Compliance Specialist, to introduce the charter applicant ISM Creative Academy.
Thank you, Leah. Hello, my name is Bijan Lane. I am a specialist in the School Performance Department. Tonight, the board will hear from the founding group of ISM Creative Academy who proposed opening a new public charter school in Washington DC. DC PCSB board members and staff reviewed the charter application and discussed it with the founding team during a capacity interview. Tonight's hearing is an opportunity for the public to hear from the applicant group and for the board to ask any unresolved questions. The board will vote to approve or deny the ISM Creative Academy application during DC PCSB's May Board Meeting. In addition to the testimony you heard tonight, DC PCSB has received eight written comments supporting and one opposing the application. At this time, I welcome the members of ISM Creative Academy to introduce themselves, then the board will ask its questions. Thank you.
Hello there, I'm Scott Mallory, proposed Board Chair and CEO. Not sure if everyone else has made it in, but I do see Shazar there.
Yes, good evening, Shazar Dushio.
Scott, I believe we're waiting probably just to locate some of the other members of your founding team in the Zoom room universe.
Got it, okay. It should be all of them.
Yeah, no problems.
They're coming in slowly but surely.
Hello, hi, my name is Ornella Hickby. I am a proposed board member for ICAEM.
Mosse is here. I'm not sure if you caught that earlier, but we're just doing a brief intro.
I'm sorry, my name is Mosse Barrendo. I'm one of the founding members, so thank you so much.
That's everyone from your list that I received.
There should be Mr. Slaughter and Mr. Mohammed.
They are not named in our attendee list.
Okay, that they should be here. I wonder if there was a glitch. Should I try and track that down or maybe on your end?
Andrea is here, but she muted at the moment. Unable to mute herself.
Okay, I do not see Andrea on the screen. There's not a second screen here.
Ayesha, is it possible to unmute Andrea? Is Andrea Shorter?
Yes, I am promoting her as well.
And was it Stephen Slaughter and Anthony Mohammed that you're also looking for?
That's right.
Okay.
I am Andre Shorter, one of the founding group.
We are also looking for Kathy. We did debug her her account with Bijan.
Scott, do you think that Kathy, there's a 703 number dialing in. Could that be Kathy?
That is possible because she had to dial in at the capacity interview.
Hi. Hi, everybody. I'm sorry, I can't get on the phone.
I'm sorry, we can't hear you very well.
Oh, God. Let me, hello?
We can hear you now.
Okay, thanks. I'm sorry. I'm Kathy McKeon, and I am a founding board member who's been trying since 5:30 to make sure I was on. But it's not working for me.
Now you sound loud and clear.
Okay, good, thanks.
Scott, there's no need to start your presentation until you've got all of your people assembled, so you can handle that business, and then we can proceed from there.
Okay, let me try something in the back end for one minute.
Sure, no problem.
Is everybody still on? You are Kathy. Okay.
Slaughter said that he is registered, so he's trying to get on. I don't know if that is reflected on your end, but let me just check again.
Yeah, we'll let you know, Scott, when we see him in the room. We're just not seeing his name at this time.
I've attended other Zoom meetings with the Charter Board, and I didn't have a problem getting on. What's wrong now?
So it looks like Mr. Slaughter is about to be in. Mr. Mohammed says that the link is not working. Just trying to figure out what he means by that.
Scott, if Mr. Mohammed re-register is on our website, it'll just send him the link again. That might be an easy way to handle the technical issues he's facing.
Okay, I'll try to relay that. Thanks.
Oh, I see Mr. Slaughter.
Promoting him now.
Great. Thank you, Ayesha.
So I'm just talking Mr. Mohammed through trying to re-register.
Scott, can you still hear me?
Yes. Scott, if you look on your Gmail, gonna provide consent for this.
So Kathy, I think I see what you just mentioned. A DocuSign, what is that for?
It will let me in on the Zoom line.
Okay, that is bizarre. Okay.
Do you think this 202 number could be Mr. Mohammed? Two, two, oh, two, four, eight, six. Does that sound familiar?
Let me check that. No, it might be a three, five, and nine. But I wouldn't rule that out. But I wouldn't rule that out. Kathy, I'm working on the DocuSign.
Hi. Drive over faster to the board meeting.
Yeah, this is odd that I would be an authorizer on this, but I'm doing a trial. So Kathy, that should be complete, the DocuSign.
Chantel, you, oh, thank you.
Hi, did someone just say something to Chantel?
Sorry, that was Shakora. I, I just wanted to let you know, but you fixed it. You're on mute. You, yeah, we're good now.
Oh, I got on. Hanging up the phone. I'm online, Scott.
Excellent.
Okay, I see Mr. Mohammed is now in the participant list.
Excellent.
Yes, look at this. And I know Kathy had just mentioned that she was able to get on via Zoom, so once those two get promoted, I'll kick it back over to Bijon to kind of restart us here.
Amazing, thank you. I myself am one for three on accessing you all Zoom links.
Yeah, I, I will tell you that technology is great, but only when it works.
So it looks like we have everyone over here. Scott, double check. Are we good?
Names are a bit scattered, but I think. I think we are good to go.
Okay, perfect. So just to restart this, it would be great if you could reintroduce yourself as well as all of the board members before you begin, Scott.
Okay, well, I'm Scott Mallory, founder, proposed board chair, and CEO of ISM Creative Academy.
Andrea Shorter, a founding member.
Mosse Barrendo, founding member.
Anthony Mohammed, founding member.
Shazar Deshio, founding member.
Arinella Hickson, founding member.
Stephen Slaughter, a founding member.
Good evening, Kathy McKeon, founding member.
Okay, have we worked our way all the way around?
Think we're good.
Scott, could you hear me?
Yes, very well.
Scott, I believe you said you had some opening remarks, or would you like us to jump into questions?
Oh, I can, I can dive into a quick presentation here. I can share my screen. Okay, so I'd just like to give an overview here of our program. Welcome to ISM, where we will be empowering the next generation of creative problem solvers through Montessori influenced and Reggio inspired education at the PK3 to K level for 168 students in wards five and six and the surrounding areas. Why I'm doing this is because as lived experience, I'm a creative person, both analog and digital, took that into arts and culture, education, ultimately social impacts, working with interesting organizations at different scales. And as I approached this opportunity, I do it from a sustainable development perspective. I do that by looking at Sustainable Development Goal Four for quality education specifically, because I think that's the most powerful goal, given that it requires education to act on any of the other goals. When I dive in even more to that goal in particular, it's really focused on inclusivity, on equity, including equal access to quality primary education, among other things, the targets within that goal. Uh, when I look at the opportunity for, to participate with DC PCSB and the new strategic roadmap, that is refreshing to me. I see really great alignment there to create an opportunity for all DC students, especially those in historically marginalized groups through that lens and commitment to race, equity, diversity, and inclusion, where I've been doing a lot of work lately. Um, we know that DC is, is going to be setting a planet scale example, whether we like it or not. Um, and I want to be part of setting that example for how to approach a local ecosystem. Um, and we know that impact must start deeply local. You look at the, the image on the left, you'll see in blue the Montessori schools that are already there. We've identified a, a gap geographically of where to potentially place our school. And as per the diagram on the right, we've chosen the most diverse area within that space. Um, and one that is most representative of the city, it's most representative of the city itself in a way that would be fair. Looking at the demand overall and in that particular area, we know that in general enrollment is coming back up three percent. We know that the PK3 lottery is up eight point seven percent. That is our key entry point. And it's a really great opportunity to try to capture kids at that age so that they're prepared, fully prepared for um, the other grade levels. Uh, we also know that there's eighty-five percent unmet Montessori application demand. We know that that's based on other schools' model, but when it comes to our model, based on surveys that we did of the community, we know that people prioritize the style of teaching, Montessori in particular, given that that was communicated in our survey, that indicates a desire for our model. What that looks like on the ground is that it is, that the education is personalized, it's self-directed, it's adaptive, and in this way, it is the most inclusive that it could be, uh, tying back to the strategic goals. Uh, we focus on child development from the Montessori perspective, uh, the physiology and the science of learning. Uh, we look at the learned environment from the, to, to build on this, uh, through the Reggio Emilio approach. And ultimately with the ISM approach, um, this is, we are facilitating a space for kids to explore their creativity, become really great problem solvers in life, um, and in any given career or profession ultimately. To implement this, our teachers will receive professional development comprehensively, end to end, from the core vision up to external enrichment, so that they can stay updated on what's happening in education and innovation in that space. Uh, so conferences and partnerships with other interesting organizations. Uh, all of that said, it must be, any impact must be community driven. Uh, it has to be steered and calibrated in real time for what the community is saying. This is what parents are saying that they want through our surveys, and everything from field trips to dance to entrepreneurship, um, to painting, and that is what they will get. So I have already created collaborations and strategic partnerships. Uh, one interesting example, and I want to make them sophisticated and world-class, is with Atlas Performing Arts Center, where we can partner with their artists and residents and performers, bring them into the classroom to collaborate with teachers, to create unique experiences with the kids. And, um, and, and we can also, of course, bring the kids into their venue for transformative experiences as well. And as for the other topics that parents expressed, um, some of the organizations on the right here, um, our organizations are willing to participate with, uh, willing to participate with us to deliver on that as well. Whoops. To make this real, uh, we have thorough sustainability planning, uh, with multiple contingencies. We do like to leverage partner resources in the community. We have a really conservative budget, uh, to make it as realistic as possible. We try to reduce dependencies on things like grants. We do have an agile workflow, um, so that, and to do things iteratively, so that uh, we can stay modern, um, and pivot if, if ever needed. Uh, we, we have interesting contracting structures that they can be adaptive. Um, and, and succession planning that is built in to our, to our staff, uh, along with professional development. So we also see ourselves as a talent pipeline for emerging talents. So we not only need, you know, the resources at hand, but also human resources. And all the, all of that is done through, uh, an amazing founding group, um, where we focus on function, the core functions of, of having an organization to, to deliver uh, such impact and stay adaptive in collaboration with subject matter experts. Um, so this is future-proof. And I will open it up to questions. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Mallory, and for the full team for joining us this evening for the application. Uh, it's, it's a lot of work to put together a charter application and pulling together a team to, to do this while you're living other lives at the same time without any guarantee of what will come of it, um, is quite a dedication. So I wanted to open up, um, this next. Open up now to my fellow board members who have, may have some questions uh, following the capacity interview and some of the notes that we've been able to review since.
Great. Uh, thanks, Leah. I'm happy to start. Mr. Mallory, thank you so much for the explanation. It's, um, exciting to hear about your interest in opening the school. And I'll just preface and say my own children did attend Reggio Emilio schools in Washington DC and benefited from that approach. Um, and it looks like you brought together a terrific team. I'm interested in learning a little bit more about their grounding in that approach. Um, how are they learning about Reggio Emilio? I see a lot of amazing experience, um, but not necessarily in Montessori or Reggio Emilio. So could you share a little bit more about that?
Yeah, so we will, um, we have relationships with subject matter experts in that. Um, a lot of us do have expertise in education as a category. Montessori and Reggio approaches are just some of the building blocks that we were putting together in collaboration with subject matter experts who we can access um, on an ongoing basis. We all, we also have comprehensive, um, professional development, which we can bring into the board. So I did, yeah, I did have a slide on some of, uh, what is involved with that, with that PD. And so, yeah, that's, that's the, the overall approach.
Can you talk a little bit more about that professional development?
Yeah, so the professional development, it starts with the core vision. Um, and then really the core philosophies of Montessori and Reggio and how we are bringing pieces of that, tying it directly to strategic goals. How are we delivering on those strategic goals through those curricular elements? And, and what are really the, the core philosophies of those particular elements? And, yeah, taking that into account to drive decision-making from a cross-functional perspective of organizational development.
Do you anticipate bringing some of those experts into the school to coach the teachers?
Yes, so, yes, those experts would lead, uh, professional development. Um, and they would also be there as curricular consultants to guide the way in which we structure that for the kids. So they would be, uh, part of the team, uh, within the school.
Great, thank you. One other thing I did want to ask, um, I saw that the proposal is focused really on wards five and six, but I also heard some, um, of the members talking about ward seven and eight, so I am confused about where you think this school might be located.
Right, so ward five would be the focus. We're only allowed to put two wards, I think, in there, so five and six, but we, we also uh, recognize that this would be very accessible to ward seven. Uh, but beyond that, we know that, that people are willing, uh, and do travel across the city to, uh, to access the schools if they want.
Thank you.
If I might just add one thing, I've spent, um, several years at Sale Public Charter School. It was school for the arts and learning, and it was a Reggio-inspired school, and I was their instructional coach during that time.
Um, hi, thank you so much, uh, for the presentation. So wanting to kind of dig in and following, um, up on what my colleague just, uh, asked a question around where. But there are several schools that serve early childhood grades in Ward Five, including Montessori programs. Why does the founding group want to open another Montessori-inspired program in such a crowded environment? And the second part to that is, what is the distinguishing factor about your program that ensures both demand and sustainability? And again, I've heard, uh, Mr. Mallory, your And again, I've heard, Mr. Mallory, your explanation with regards to blending reggio and Montessori. But sort of what are some other distinguishing factors with regard to your program?
Okay, so I think for your first question, I think that goes back to the demands. Geographically, the gap that's there, I would say that that's not a lot of Montessori schools. And those are, of course, different models. We talked about the distinguishing factors. So we intend to build on Montessori. So we're innovating. So it's Montessori influenced. We are, we intend to extend the offerings of Montessori through reggio practices. And so there's the structure of Montessori, the physiology of it, the focus on the science of learning and the way that those that those that that facilitation goes. But then also the the teachers can adapt in real time using reggio practices and say during the hour, pull them out to project based work, for example, and then let the child sort of become the curriculum and a creator of culture, as they say. And so we can do that in a way that is adaptive. We had a focus on creativity here, and it was mission driven in its own way. And then we thought, how do we achieve this mission? The way to achieve this mission, according to the landscape, is we could put Montessori and reggio together in this sort of interesting way. But I I think that that geographically we are, I I I don't see it as crowded. I see it. Yeah, I think we're filling a gap there.
And then kind of building on that, and I'll step back so my colleagues can get in. Where have in your research, where have you seen this done before and what have the outcomes been for students?
So we've seen Montessori, you know, has a has a long history and there's a lot of data to back that up.
No, no, not Montessori, but sort of the blending of the two in your research.
Oh, no, no, we are innovating. I've never seen this before. And in consultation with subject matter experts, I've set out to validate this idea. And that is, yeah, that this is this is innovation.
Mr. Mallory, it's good to see you again. Good to see the team again, having been with you at the capacity interview. I do want to ask you a question that we kind of led with in that interview, because I do think it just it it always is really, really important. And that's just the why question. You know, why do you want? So you've given a general sense of kind of why in your slides. But I think, you know, why this moment? And actually, why you personally, right? Like, why is this the right next chapter for you as a leader? As you think about the 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 interesting career you've had up to this point?
Yeah, that's a great question. I think this is the perfect next step. Me personally, as a creative person, and I was always seeking truth. All of my artwork was about the intersection of philosophy and physics and how to interact with that subject matter. Within philosophy, that comes morals and ethics. How do you know you're doing the right thing at any given time? And in today's society, morals and ethics, turning that into action means doing social impact work. It means doing social innovation. And so I've done that, you know, in personal work gradually. I've done that with more and more organizations at scale. And I think this is this is the perfect moment to do this. I've worked with research institutions. I've worked with large corporations. I've worked with small community groups who do not have a legal document. I've worked with universities, every piece of the ecosystem, startup ecosystems as well and entrepreneurship. And when I bring together business, academia, government, nonprofit, social enterprise, community, this is what I see. How do you make sense of sustainable development? All of the the world's biggest problems circle back to education from my perspective. And, you know, where do I apply myself at this point? Education. This is this is the role of everything that I've ever done, I think.
What do you think you're going to have to learn in order to be a good head of school? If you think about a more traditional path where a person comes up and and the path you've pursued.
Well, we don't know what we don't know. I I read a book called Learning Teaching. So, um, yeah, I think I, yeah, what do I, what will I have to learn? That will come from the parents. It will come from the families. It will come from the kids. Like I said, it has to be community driven. We don't know what we don't know. Unless, or you could give me an example of what you think.
No, no, that's fine. That that's fine. I just wanted to.
I could say what I would like to learn, how to scale something like this. What if something is not scalable? What is the point? That is not impacting, for example. How do you, what is what is this era of of education? There's other things that I want to learn, like I look at like corporate governance and and corporate like ethics. And I talk with like with industry leaders about, you know, what's happening in that space. And they always say, well, the the problem is not in university. They didn't learn this in university. The problem is in early childhood education. When I when I work with Canada's Particle Accelerator, we're working on talent pipelines. They're we're saying that there's not enough diversity in STEM for women in terms of like gender and in terms of race. There's not enough diversity in STEM. How do we attract the next generation of STEM talent who's doing some of the most important innovations in the world? Solving planet scale problems, it goes back to the early childhood level because, you know, what I'm working on projects that are part of like Canada's largest science investment of, you know, a few hundred million or something like that. And we're doing posters for kids, for example, on some of our projects. And so these are some of the things I'm thinking about. These are some of the things I'm trying to discover and learn how to interact with this with this broader ecosystem and how to apply myself for for the next twenty years.
So Scott, I want to I want to make sure I understand what, who who is doing this work with you? So I hear you talking about learning and figuring out, and I've heard, I heard, I think I heard Kathy say she worked at a former charter school. Do you have an instructional person who actually has run a school or been part of a school that's going to be part of the the actual running and leadership of the school, proposed school?
Yeah, Mosel has been part of of running a school. We definitely have curricular experts who are on board. Mosel, do you want to talk about your experience?
Also, Mosel, before you talk, is Mosel going to be on staff at the school? Or is he going to be part of the board? Because there's a difference between governance and management. I'm talking about management. Who, in terms of actual day to day operation of the school, has that? Is is that going, is Mosel proposed to come on as the instructional leader?
Okay, so in terms of instruction, so that would be, there's a contract structure for that in terms of the curricular lead, there would be the principal as well. So some of that is, you know, at the hiring phase when it comes to the instructional aspect.
Board member, right. Did you have a, because I have a follow up question. I don't want to, and I I don't. So I'm kind of building on a board member Rodriguez, one of the statements he made. And kind of thinking about this question about the moment, Mr. Mallory, and and really to any of the other founding members. Right now, we are in a situation where our children, we are playing a serious game of catch up. The young people you're actually, in the communities you're actually proposing to serve, have young people who are not only just catching up, but from before COVID, many of them were behind. And so my question to you, with such an innovative model that you're proposing and just given where we are, how do you think about COVID, you know, recovery, learning loss? How do you think about that? We know that you want to serve on the early childhood end, but there were impacts to those young people. How are you thinking about all of those factors in in the planning of your school?
Okay, so I I feel like you're asking the the question in parts. You're talking about people who have fallen behind because of COVID?
Oh, no, I'm when I what I named for that is there is, we're just in a broader context right now in this, in the city, in the country where kids are, they're, you know, learning losses occurred. And I know that you all are interested in opening up an early childhood program. But there were still these young people who are coming into the program, who do come into the program. They still had trauma that they dealt with with regard to all this. How are you all thinking about this? How does that factor in when you're trying a new model? And these young people are going to go off into other schools? Like, how are you thinking about this? Or was any of that part of your plan or your thinking? Just curious.
Yes. So to to make it as inclusive as possible through Montessori practices where the where the teaching can be personalized and individualized during the time that is that is available in those blocks as is characteristic of those models. So that sort of accounts for those spectrums that you're talking about. The model is 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 extremely inclusive in nature.
Okay.
Yeah. Can I add a little something to that response as well? Because I have seen firsthand what COVID has done to the children in the city. And COVID wasn't the only thing that got in the way of children advancing at high levels. And so part of the thinking around this school is to build a foundation, knowing that the children at three have been stuck home during COVID and making sure that we have a program that meets their social and emotional needs as well. And what has been created here is an opportunity for children to express themselves in other ways rather than coming in and sitting at a desk or at a table doing the traditional, what we know to be, school. And I think there's great potential for other schools in the city to come and observe in time and see how they can tweak some of the things they're doing to meet the social and emotional needs of our kids as well. Does that answer any part of your question?
Part of it, but yes, that's fine. I I want to step back and give my colleagues space to ask questions.
May I? May I just touch on that just a little bit, if I may? I I I think one of the the underlying issue or call question that that is on a table here is the fact that we're presenting an approach that is slightly different. Again, the key thing is that we want to look at things from a creative standpoint, how you look at a problem and employ creative strategies to be able to kind of attain a different solution to that problem. And I think that's one of the biggest problem that we have now that kids are not challenged in that way to allow them to come out with creative approaches at at facing at some of the challenges that faces us. But I think as it relates to COVID, learning loss during COVID, it is important to know where the kids are. And I think one of the the assessment component that that's that's embedded within the curriculum, I think, is the gold, gold assessment would allow us to to understand where the kids are and then be able to kind of like introduce different techniques, different approach in terms of how to kind of bridge that gap, that learning gap that that we know already exists. But ultimately, I think the 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 biggest approach is coming at it from a creative standpoint. And from that creative standpoint, kids and not only kids, we taught my family as well, are able to kind of like dissect a particular problem in a different way than than the norm to to provide solutions that 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 are that tend to to be underlying issues in in our community.
Okay, thank you so much.
Mr. Mallory, there are two newer Montessori inspired schools in Ward seven, both of which are enrolling fewer students than they anticipated enrolling. You've said you plan to recruit from Ward seven. What is it about your school that you think will allow you to meet the enrollment goals that you've established and do better than those two Montessori schools?
Well, I I can't speak for for those schools, but we have our own local outreach approach as well as some of the surveying that we've done about our model in particular. Mr. Mohammed, Mr. Slaughter, could you like to speak to some of that, how some of that outreach works?
Yes, we spoke with the council member of Ward five. We spoke with some of the ANC's of Ward five. Jackie Manning, Harry Thomas Jr., former council member of Ward five. Gordon Fletcher, who ran for Ward five. And these are the chairs of some of the ANC's that's in this ward. So we have spoke with a lot of the people that deal with people on a daily basis, which tells us that they are looking for new means and methods of how to reach the children that are not being reached. So just with those with, and and I went around almost the entire Ward five from South Dakota and Ridge Road to Bladeburg and and Eighth Street to North Capitol and W. So I covered the whole ward in reaching out to the citizens that live in the ward, who are telling me they are looking for something new. Would you like to add, Mr. Slaughter?
Yeah, so with this is an opportunity to not only reach out to the members of, to the citizens of Ward five, but also reach out to the residents of Ward seven, giving them a new option, a better option where they can enroll their students, I'm sorry, their kids, and give them another opportunity. It's not always a great opportunity in Ward seven, not to say anything negative about the environment or about the school, about their community. It just gives them another option, another place to send their their students, their kids, because you particularly asked us about Ward seven. Now, you said Ward seven is filling. How can we reach out, as we mentioned, you know, maybe getting students in from Ward seven. But particularly, we're focused is on Ward five and six. It's like, it's giving the the parents an opportunity to enroll their kids in a new school, a new program, and new opportunities, better opportunities in the past. Again, not knocking any of the schools that's currently out there. We just have a new and better approach. And 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 I can tell you from working with with these members here, we are all dedicated and committed to to the success of of this school. And again, to providing students with another opportunity.
Thank you.
Mr. Mallory, I I want to build on a couple of questions that my colleagues have asked so far. And bring to a close around two things. First, I'd like to hear a bit about how you have in your founding team have involved families and community members. I know, Mr. Mohammed, you mentioned some selected officials, but want to hear more broadly from community members and in the design and and your application. And then on to what Shantel's question had been earlier around specific skills around instruction in a full continuum of services for specifically special ed students. How you are going to, how you may have some of that expertise on your team already? And if you don't, how you're going to ensure that you have it? Because some skills, we cannot wait to find out what you don't know, to ensure that we are offering a public school that is available and accessible to all children.
Got it. So I have spoken with parents who have children of this age and some who have been trying to get them into Montessori programs and sort of taking it from program to program and just and just listening to some of the struggles that they've had, some of the challenges and also some of the things that they liked about that experience. And, you know, they're saying things like every every child is different. My child needs to to explore their creativity. And and, you know, I won't go into detail about which schools, you know, they had different experiences at. But I had a chance to 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 listen through conversation, not just surveys about their experiences. It is qualitative, but I could take that into consideration in trying to tweak, adapt, and also validate this model. In terms of in terms of sped, we do have. uh, in terms of sped, uh, we do have Shazara here as an expert, um, to speak a little bit more to that.
Good evening. As it relates to, um, the special ed population, we already know that that population is already working at a disadvantage. But here at ISN, we tend to use one-on-one approach and actually using that as our learning models. We also too would ever plan on using, um, child-led learning opportunities to support them. In, in all, um, is not, is not always an option to children, especially children with exceptionalities, um, in the communities that we're actually planning on serving.
Thank you for that. Board members.
Yes, I have, I have, um, yeah, I have a question, a, a couple of, a, a couple of specific questions. Um, so, um, one question for you, Ms. Shorter, um, you know, you were previously affiliated with Options PCS. And as, as we all know, um, Options PCS's charter was revoked, um, due to fiscal mismanagement. And just wanted to ask you to speak a bit to that experience. You know, what were your key responsibilities while you were there? And what have you learned since that experience?
So I was, um, I was the outside accountant. Um, and I functioned as the, um, yeah, the outside accountant doing the accounting work and the bookkeeping. Um, so as far as, yeah, so that was what my role was. And, um, as far as the, um, revoking of their charter, that, um, that aspect, um, I tried to guide them in the proper way, but it, the information was just not heard.
What would you, what would you say would be your kind of, you know, top do's and don'ts for this team starting off? Uh, you know, obviously to avoid an outcome like that and obviously do bet, do much better than that.
Right. So, um, basically at the moment that, um, I see that it's, you know, that my, my consulting is not, um, being heard or listened to. I would probably, um, leave, but, um, just sort of giving my past experience and, um, providing them with the information from those lessons learned would be, um, where I would start.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, Mr. Mallory, I have just a broader question about the team writ large. You've said a few times now, you know, this team is, um, uh, you know, this is, this has been a, a great team that's all committed to this work. Just love to hear, we have asked you about your origin story. What about the origin story of the team? How did they come together? How did you find one another? Um, and, and, and decide that you wanted to commit to this mission together?
Yeah, largely, um, professional networking since, uh, since the time of what you saw in some of those pictures there. Um, I think around two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, I created a music studio. Um, at that time, I got to know Moser and gradually got to know, uh, some of the others here. Um, and, and, you know, this was an idea. You know, I was focused on music, focused on studios, and I was thinking about how to create, you know, some kind of an educational context for that and make it more of an, an outreach initiative. Um, I then learned about, you know, some, how some of the school systems work and, um, you know, as I grew as a professional, it, it has reached, you know, this, this proposal today. And, yeah, through professional networking along the way, I've come to know this group. They've gotten to know some of the creative things that I've been involved with along the way before there was an actual charter school idea. Um, and so there's a, there's an intimate knowledge of sort of how I think and how I work, some of the things I'm interested in. Um, they're passionate about, you know, having impacts locally through education. And, uh, and here we are.
And how was the team collectively involved in the school's creation?
So, okay, so when I, when I, when I crystallized, um, this idea, um, I thought about, okay, who, who and how would be the right way to, to implement this? And so through conversations about this idea and seeing what they thought, um, uh, a lot of people around me, seeing what a lot of people around me thought, but also thinking about, okay, well, who could be right for helping to implement this? Uh, what are the sort of formal pieces that need to be in place no matter what? Um, and through those conversations, uh, this, this group came on board.
Great, thank you.
I'd like to thank all of our participants this evening. And a special thank you for our public comment speakers and the ISN Creative Academy team for joining us tonight for your application and for answering all of our questions. If we have no further questions, this concludes this evening's public hearing. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I move to adjourn the, uh, adjourn the public meeting.
A second.
Thank you. I'll take a roll call vote. Jim Sandman?
Aye.
Shakora Adama-Fanian?
Aye.
Ricardo Ganjam?
Aye.
Chantel Wright?
Aye.
Nick Rodriguez?
Aye.
I am also an aye. Good night. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Bye.
Thank you. Good night.